Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mrs. Carl?
Here.
Mr. Hillier?
Here.
Mr. Fair?
Here.
Mrs. Sievel?
Here.
Mr. Barone?
Mr. Barone is not here this evening, do we have a motion to excuse Mr. Barone?
Still move.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay, Mr. Barone is excused. The invocation this evening will be given by Reverend Tim Overly from the Covenant Christian Church. Please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we just thank you for the city council, Lord, that has been selected for this position, Lord, to actually support this community and to stand up for this community. And, Lord, we thank you, Lord, your word says that there's wisdom in a multitude of counselors, and we thank you for the counselors that are here today. And, Lord, I pray that you would give them the wisdom and the direction, Lord, for this city. Lord, give them the direction for the finances, the economy, the social aspects of this community and in every area, Lord. And, Lord, we thank you, your word says that you'll meet all of our needs according to Christ's riches and glory. And, Lord, we thank you for those riches that are found in him as we go through this Thanksgiving holiday, Lord. We're so thankful for all that you've done for this community and, Lord, bringing these men and women here to make the decisions that they have to make. And, Lord, I pray that you guide this meeting and every step is ordered by you, Lord, and we thank you for that. In Jesus' name, we put our faith in the finished work of the cross, and everybody said, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming this evening, appreciate it. Counsel, are there any petitions or communications? Any committee reports? I see no liquor control licenses this evening, so we'll move on to proclamations.
My proclamation, yes, proclamation's gonna be read this evening by John Francis. It's very appropriate, and I defer to you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. This proclamation is honoring a local hero who sacrificed himself, not only for this nation but for this community. So proclamation, honoring Sergeant Benjamin J. Layman, 1st Battalion, 10th Cavalry Regiment, 2nd Brigade Combat Team, 4th Infantry Division, Fort Hood, Texas. Whereas the city council of the city of Mount Vernon, Ohio, are aware of the death on Saturday, June 24th, 2006, of United States Sergeant Benjamin J. Layman, aged 22, while in combat operations in South Baghdad, Iraq. Whereas it is apparent to all, Sergeant Layman willingly made the ultimate sacrifice in the service of his country, and whereas Benjamin was a respected, admired, and cherished member of this community, whose losses felt keenly by all who knew him or knew of him. And whereas this city council expresses deep sympathy to the family members and friends of Benjamin and their bereavement, and whereas the city council has determined that it is fitting and proper to memorialize Benjamin in a lasting and significant way, now therefore be it resolved by the administration and city council of the city of Mount Vernon that the portion of Mansfield Avenue from the intersection of Mansfield Avenue and Curtis Street to the North Corporation Limits be dedicated to the memory of Sergeant Benjamin J. Layman and shall hereafter be known as the Sergeant Benjamin J. Layman Memorial Avenue. Appropriate signs identifying the name of this portion of the roadway memorializing the sacrifice made by Sergeant Layman shall be prepared and directed as approved. Thank you, Mr. Fair.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to persons speaking on matters not covered by legislation, and we have Mr. Steve Tier to discuss an initiative to raise money to improve the tennis courts at Memorial Park. Mr. Tier.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am a lifelong resident of Mount Vernon, and I've been playing tennis in this town since I was 10 years old, and I've come here tonight to share a vision with you concerning the reconfiguration of our public tennis courts. I am an assistant coach for the boys' team at the high school, and along the way I've become the head coach for the girls' team at the high school. I'm also the tennis director for the city recreation board, so I've been deeply involved with tennis. And when we got into the high school competition, I noticed that our teams weren't competing with some teams that we should be competing with, like Big Walnut, or Delaware, or Watkins Memorial. So I started to ask those coaches of those teams, "What are you doing?" And the one thing that I found out that we were missing is that we didn't have anything like a feeder program where we could introduce and develop the sport with young children. And so, as I found that out, I also went to a session put on by the USTA about coaching in high school and was first introduced to something called Quick Start Tennis. This was an initiative by the USTA to get young children to know that tennis exists and to play. Tennis finally got smart, made little rackets and little balls and little nets and little courts for little kids instead of putting them out there with the same stuff the Wimbledon Champion used. So when I saw that, I thought, "Uh-huh, that's what we need." So we started the program here in Mount Vernon about six years ago, and it eventually became the city recreation department's program. It's been very successful. Last year, our program worked with 90 to 100 students, grades K through 12. And even our little program here was just honored by the northeastern Ohio section of the USTA as its youth team tennis provider of the year. Now, that section represents 22 counties in northeast Ohio, and that includes the counties with Cleveland, Akron, Canton, those big cities. So we were very honored to be named that. And as our program grew, I came to realize that there wasn't a chance for young players to go play on their own on a court appropriate for their age. So I learned that USTA had a grant for new court construction. So two years ago, I applied. My original vision was to add an extra court onto the six existing courts that are there at Memorial Park. All right? In that extra court, four of the what's called the 36-foot courts that are used for five and eight-year-olds would fit in the footprint of that regular court. And if you look at the handout I gave you, the first picture on the front is what those little courts look like. Well, USTA sent me a drawing using our six courts, and that's on your second page, so you can see what the six courts and the whole courts look like together. And I also found out that with USTA money came USTA regulations for safety. Well, you just, I found out you couldn't just add a court on the end with just the money that USTA was gonna give us if we got the grant. So about this time, Scott became the park director, and I shared with him my vision, and he mentioned that he had plans to resurface the courts. And if I could raise the money to reconfigure the courts, his money might be available to help with those costs. Well, also at this time, I shared my vision with other people, including Alvin Chang, who is an assistant coach for the men and women's team at Kenyon College. He offered his insights from a coach's perspective. He thought it would be great if we could build eight courts rather than six. Even with all of Kenyon's 12 outdoor courts and four indoor courts, they don't have enough courts to host tournaments or their own conference tournament. He would be interested in utilizing these courts for these events. This could lead to revenue for the parks department through fees through the use of our facilities and cash flowing into the community. I've also shared this vision with Dr. Scott Peterson of Mount Vernon Nazarene University, which the university is starting a campaign to build tennis courts for a future tennis program with the thing to have. I suggested we could maybe combine our efforts and possibly save each of us some money. So that idea has been shared within the athletic department, and a representative from the university will be joining a steering committee that has been formed to help organize our efforts towards this project. Now, participation by these institutions may provide an opportunity for assistance in our construction costs, but there has been no official discussions or offers at this time. Those eight courts could also make us eligible to host USTA tournaments and Ohio High School Athletic Association tournaments. This, again, could lead to more revenue for our city's merchants and for our parks department. So after forming a steering committee to discuss all these ideas, it was decided to ask the USTA to do another drawing of eight courts, which is the last drawing that you have. So I shared this information with you tonight to ask your permission to proceed with this project so that our committee could start fundraising activities. I have already presented this information to the city recreation board earlier this month, and they passed a motion to give their approval for our committee to continue our activities. I would hope that you would consider this same action and help us introduce and develop tennis in this community. This is a sport that people can play for a lifetime, and I would appreciate your support as we try to provide this opportunity for the citizens of Mount Vernon. I thank you for your time, and I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So you're not here, Steve, to ask for money from us because you have a steering committee that you have already formed that is going to be trying to find their own sources of money?
Yes.
Quite aside.
Yes.
So you're asking for us to simply endorse this plan and possibly the courts would be expanded more in an easterly direction at Memorial Park. You've already talked to Scott Zimmerman, and you think this is something that, you know, would work? From your point of view?
We have the space out there.
Have the space?
Yes.
Okay. And maintenance issues would not be an issue?
That's something I believe that I would like to maybe include the colleges if they're gonna be using this also and things like that, but also if this would turn into something that would have revenue, then that would be something that we could earmark for on maintenance.
Okay, okay.
How much money are you looking to earn?
Well, I've put out a request for bids for it, and I've only heard back from one person. And that bid to do just the six courts is $320,000, and to do the eight courts is $400,000. So you can see why I'm not coming to council for money.
Is that fancy at all, Steve? Or just?
I believe it is, it is, there are some regulations that came with these drawings for the safety, so it would have to do with the fencing and like making sure the lights are on the outside of the fences. We'd have to expand the footprint of the courts that are there now for safety reasons. There's, all that's in that bid.
Stephen, your fundraising, if you went to the community foundation, you'd have to have either 501(c)(3) or a nonprofit do that. Would that be in our name? How would that have to be done?
Well, another hat that I wear is a community tennis association, which is part of the USTA. It's called the Kokozing Valley Community Tennis Association. And we are a nonprofit. I've gone through all the paperwork so that we are declared a nonprofit group. I am not sure I am the nonprofit 501. I just found out there's different kinds of nonprofits, so I have to look into that.
But since it's on city property, that maybe, you have to deal with the community foundation, that since it's on city property, you may have to go through us for the application. But that's something you need to, you know, look into a little further.
I think it's wonderful. Yeah, so you're just talking about using city property to do something that you're basically gonna raise money to complete.
I would envision this as being a gift to the city.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
How soon you need that answer?
Well, we'd like to get started as soon as possible to do the fundraising, and we'd hate to put in all that work and then find out you guys aren't in support of it, so whenever you would like.
So what do we need to do, Mayor? Do we need to?
Well, that would go to your committee.
Okay.
If you wanna propose a resolution, is that, and your committee, and you as the committee chair could propose a resolution to be, to go to the city law director for this consideration.
Okay. I will do that. Thank you, Mr. Barone.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Anything else? All right. Counsel, we're gonna now move on to the legislative portion of the meeting, and you have in your packet a, an agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I need to add, we need to add to the agenda Resolution 2014-98, Mr. President.
The Parks and Lands Committee did ask, no, the, your committee?
Parks and Lands.
Parks and Lands did ask for that to be on the agenda. Can we approve the agenda by consensus? Any, anybody disagree? So we are adding Resolution 2014-98 to the agenda. We'll move on with the legislative portion of the meeting. We'll start with resolutions for third reading. First one is Resolution 2014-92, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number 2014-92, resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon to accept the deeds to the South Mulberry Street parking lot from the Mount Vernon Parking Company consisting of seven parcels, 66-01032, 04261, 04262, 04263, 04669, 05791, and 09818.
Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move for passage of Resolution Number 2014-92.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion, Mrs. Carl?
Yes, you know, we had a committee meeting about this, and we started discussing this several months ago, and I think that the major concern that we had at that time was the tax obligations. And as you can see by looking at this particular resolution, it says the Mount Vernon Parking Company has agreed to transfer this property to the city free and clear of any tax obligations. So I think after that, this resolution, you know, that wording has made it so that, from what I understand, there aren't any council members that have any opposition to this. So, but we can hear that now if anybody has a concern.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Mrs. Noel?
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
As President of the Melbourne Parking Company Board, I will abstain.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Resolution 2014-92 is adopted. The next resolution for this evening is Resolution 2014-94, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-94, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell by sealed bid two vehicles not needed for public use by the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Sievel.
Thank you. I request that the rule requiring three separate readings be suspended and take this resolution to be its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Sievel.
I would like for passage of this resolution, 2014-94, please.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Sievel.
Yes, this is getting rid of some of the police vehicles that we no longer use. Would you like to talk about it, Mr. Class?
Well, the one is that, the newer of the two is a police vehicle that just came offline this year, and then the older one was used in the parks department for an additional four or five years, and we transferred one of the most recent police cruisers that came off. No, we try to reuse all the police cruisers as often as we can, but these are the two we need to get rid of this year.
So that'll give us some extra money, which is great.
A few dollars.
Anybody have any questions?
Do the best we can, yeah.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Noel?
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Resolution 2014-94 is adopted. We'll now move on to resolutions for first reading. We have several of those. The first one is Resolution 2014-96, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-96, a resolution establishing the City of Mount Vernon's membership in the Knox County Regional Planning Commission, appointing representatives and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Vale?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution that we need to pass annually for persons who will represent us on the Regional Planning Commission, and the persons who have been serving, have been loyal, and have attended meetings as they need to, and we will ask that the same people be appointed, those who are being appointed have agreed that they are willing to continue their service. I will be the regular member. Mike Hillier will be the alternate member to me. The City Planning Commission will include our mayor, Richard Mavis, and citizen members, John Owens and Terry Steinmetz, with Cameron Keaton being the alternate for those positions. I would like to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for Resolution 2014-96 this evening.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Vale?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move for passage of Resolution Number 2014-96.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Vale?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Noel?
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The next resolution is Resolution 2013-97, 2014-97, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-97, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon to accept the donation of 0.016 acres from Robert L. Kirk located at the northeast corner of Worcester Road and McGibney Road.
Mrs. Carl.
I'm gonna give this a first reading tonight, but I understand after talking to the mayor or before the meeting that we will discuss this more and maybe have a committee meeting at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Carl. Resolution 2014-97 receives its first reading. The next resolution is one that was inserted tonight, which is Resolution 2014-98, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-98, a resolution authorizing the purchase of the property known as 102 North Sandusky Street, parcel number 66-05572, and more specifically described in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Carl.
Thank you. I request the rule requiring three separate readings be suspended and that Resolution 2014-98 be taken to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on suspensions? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of Resolution 2014-98.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Carl?
We had a committee meeting and discussed this, and I don't know if the mayor wants to say anything more about this at this point. There's more people in the audience now, and maybe you want to explain it again or not.
We can talk about this resolution that gives the service director the opportunity to sign a purchase agreement after the support of, or with the support of, the law director. And this is something we've been working on for, I think, last budget time because the council put the money aside to buy this property on Sandusky Street across from Rolls-Royce, which will be used for additional parking lot for them. It's taken this long to negotiate with the seller of the property, and we believe that we're very close to getting that finished. Our goal was to get this done before the transition from Rolls-Royce to Siemens, and we feel good that both the seller, Rolls-Royce, Siemens, City of Mount Vernon, working together is really a, kind of a, requires a lease agreement with Rolls-Royce where they're gonna give us $15,000 a year for 10 years, paying us $150,000 of the purchase price. And the house will be demoed by the seller. All that was built into the total of $190,000. So we're hopeful this moves along, and just for folks who are questioning that, the agreement we have with Rolls-Royce about to be Siemens will pay the city the $150,000. And I know there's always skeptics out there who are saying, "Well, what happens if they cease to do business here?" The agreement calls for them to pay the city the entire $150,000, no matter whether it happens in a year or 10 years.
Thank you. Great.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-99, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-99, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to accept an easement from Knox County Properties Incorporated over a 1.718 acre portion of parcel 12-02650, as shown on Exhibit A and described in Exhibit B.
Mrs. Carl.
Again, I'm gonna give this a first reading, and we will have more discussion about this at our next council meeting whenever we don't have so many other committee meetings.
We have quite a few tonight.
Yeah, we had quite a few tonight. We didn't need any more tonight, yes.
This resolution does receive its first reading. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-100, Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-100, a resolution dedicating the portion of Mansfield Avenue from the intersection of Mansfield Avenue and Curtis Street to the North Corporation Limits as the Sergeant Benjamin J. Layman Memorial Avenue.
Mr. Fair.
And I'm going to defer to Mr. Francis. We talked about this earlier.
Mr. Fair, I request that the rules requiring three separate readings be suspended and that we take this to its third and final reading.
I second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Fair?
Mr. Francis?
Request adoption of Resolution 2014-100.
I second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? I guess, Mr. Francis. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna defer right to the mayor because he did an absolute excellent job with the footwork of contacting the family members. He was contacted through a member of the community and really, really took it right. It's only been about a month, I think, since the time the first phone call come in, so I appreciate that, and I'll just hand it over to you, Mr. Fair. Well, John, thank you for the work that you did in supporting of the Rolling Thunder's proposal to name a section of Mansfield Road, and the reason Mansfield Road was selected, of course, that Sergeant Ben Layman, as he was growing up and going to Mount Vernon School, lived out on Mansfield Road. And so after talking to the parents, it really seemed to be an initiative for one of our young men that was killed in service. And with the support of the parents, I checked with the state of Ohio, Margaret Ann, and they had not been asked to move ahead with anything at the state level. Rolling Thunder, John, other people have been very supportive, even in talking to the county commissioners. Talked to them today. Once council had acted, they will act by resolution also and really extend this highway on beyond the city limits out to where the young man grew up. So this is fitting, and I think we all appreciate the work that was done in preparation. By the way, Paul Klein, who's a Rolling Thunder member, I thought was gonna be here tonight, and they have already procured the signs indicating the Memorial Highway, so I'm sure we'll get a chance to see those. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And might I just add to anybody that's watching, listening, this is such a small thing that we're doing for such a great sacrifice. It's individuals like Sergeant Layman who make this possible right here, so we can't do enough. And that's why I can say I really appreciate the effort that the mayor's put in there,[1748.49]
And that's why I can say I really appreciate the effort that the mayor's put in there, and he even knows that that's the most he can do. But the greatest was done by Sergeant Lehman. So thank you, Mr. Fayer, and I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
You know, if there are any persons who want to make contribution to a memorial for this young man, there is an account at the Community Foundation, and checks can be written for that account.
Thank you. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-101. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-101, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule for three separate readings, take Resolution 2014-101 to its third and final reading, please.
Second.
Moving second for the suspension of the rules, any discussion on suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hilliard?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2014-101, please.
Second.
Moving second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mr. Hilliard?
Council, looks like we're getting, we need to transfer some money into an account, and I'll have Mr. Scott explain that, if he would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard and council. This is a supplemental resolution. These are new funds coming into the city's treasury that was not anticipated for this year. They come to us from the way of the Adam Board for a number of years through our drug treatment program. The Adam Board of Licking County had been our fiscal agent. We actually would transmit funds collected through our Mount Vernon Municipal Court System for injured drivers alcohol treatment program. The services are administered here locally by the Freedom Center. And the Adam Board, as well as the Freedom Center, have both taken on a little different approach for the fiscal aspects of how this program will move forward. And in their treasury, they had $41,645 that was allocated to all of the funds that we had sent to them over a number of years. We will now be doing all of the distribution and services directly with the Freedom Center out of our treasury now, and the Adam Board will no longer be a part of the fiscal aspects of this service. Now, all of this money coming through is coming by way of collections through the Mount Vernon Municipal Court programs, and will continue to do services for additional injured drivers alcohol treatment and any other related alcohol treatment programs that they may put in place. So it's something that probably might have been a better aspect many years ago, but this seems to be a more workable program on behalf of the Freedom Center here in Mount Vernon. So we have new funds coming into the treasury.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution this evening is Resolution 2014-102. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-102, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-102 to its third and final reading, please.
Second.
Moving second for the suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Hilliard?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2014-102, please.
Second.
And moving second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, you have before you eight transfers. I read them as two to police equipment repair and six to employee final payoff, and looks like a total of $83,000, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard and council. On this resolution, as we began to kind of wrap things up, we continue to have retirements throughout the city for a number of reasons. Items one and two together is a combined total of $6,000, is additional funding for maintenance of equipment in the police department. This is the line account where all the maintenance of their equipment and cruisers, fuel for the cruisers and related items are paid from. Three through six, for a grand total of $47,000, will be going into, and this is the general fund, for employee final payoff. We have had two retirements come through, again, so that we need to make settlement on those. Item seven is from the water funds, and again, it will be for employee retirement, final payoff. And line eight, for $15,000, will be the matching side of that for retirement that's coming at the end of this month. So we've had a number, if you've followed this throughout the year, we have supplemented some of these line accounts quite well over the course of this year because we really have had a lot of unanticipated retirements or separations from the city, so.
Any other discussion?
Thank you. Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Final resolution this evening is Resolution 2014-103. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-103, a resolution to grant an easement in the city right-of-way of Blackberry Alley.
Mr. Fayer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give this a second reading for this evening.
First reading.
First reading.
First reading.
Oh, my bad. Yeah, I'm looking at the old copy I have here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution 2014-103 receives its first reading. That concludes the resolutions. We now move on to ordinances. The first ordinance is for third reading, and that's Ordinance 2014-17. Mrs. Noel.
Ordinance Number 2014-17, an ordinance establishing the rate of compensation for the interim administrator of treatment and distribution, who also serves as operator of record for the water, for the wastewater treatment plant and distribution system and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Ordinance 2014-17.
Second.
Moving second for the adoption of this resolution, this ordinance, any discussion? Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Glass, would you like to add anything?
Only that, you know, this is the additional compensation we're paying the person who's our operator of record for the water and wastewater treatment plants. And even though that seems like a lot of money, that's the difference between his existing wage and the wage the administrator was using before they retired in the spring. So we've actually saved the cost of the administrator for the last five or six months to give to yous.
This is a lot of responsibility.
Yeah, and I would like to add, too, that Mathias is a, he's top shelf. He's a good employee of the city. Goes beyond and above.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance for third reading is Ordinance Number 2014-19. Mrs. Noel.
Ordinance Number 2014-19, an ordinance accepting the plat of a portion of Venture Drive and confirming the dedication of the street thereon shown and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Vale? I'm sorry, Mr. Fayer.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to give this just a first reading for this evening.
Well, this is, this was the third reading.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to move for the adoption of Ordinance 2014-19.
Second.
Moving second for the adoption of this ordinance, any discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Fayer?
Other than just any questions council may have, or Mr. Glass?
Well, I just want, I just want to see what Mike's question is, but I could clarify what this is.
No, I want you to clarify what we're exactly doing. Thank you.
Okay. This is Venture Drive. You're all familiar with Venture Drive as the back entrance to the Kmart shopping plaza?
Maybe they could put up the drawings so people at home can see what you're talking about. There you go.
Originally, when that plaza was built, the Glimpser Company built that plaza, and they held an extra five acres that was east of the edge of the original Big Bear, if you're familiar with that, where the craft store is now.
Okay.
That property, Glimpser's gone out of business, and that property is now owned by Ramsers Management or whatever.
Knox Associates.
And we had never, nobody had ever obtained or made that a public street. If you're familiar, three quarters of that street is curb and gutter. Where that curb and gutter ends from there over to the parking lot was just a driveway across private property. So this will make that a public street. And if you see the radius on your drawing, that will provide for a radius or a turnaround to be built someday if there ever has to be a cul-de-sac at the end of that.
Oh, okay, okay.
But for now, it's not going to inhibit being able to go on through to the parking lot.
Yeah, it's not going to change a thing for now. It's just providing that that be a public right-of-way and providing for a possible future cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
A few years ago, I don't, I think it's been a couple, there was an issue about that not being maintained.
Right.
And I thought it was the city's job to maintain it, but we had the property owner at the time maintain, or repair it, not maintain it, but repair it. So now this becomes our.
This is now a public street, yeah.
Our public street.
This is done.
So then we'll have to maintain it. Who will build the curbs and all that?
Anybody who develops that lot. There's actually a five-acre lot there, and there's a lot to the south alongside of the craft store, and a lot to the north between this road and where the hill breaks off there.
So the.
So anybody who would develop those.
Not the city, it's not going to be their city's responsibility. And that is in the city now, it just wasn't taken care of by the city, correct?
When it was resurfaced a few years ago, when it was resurfaced a few years ago, we sent that bill to the Glimpser Company.
It is in the city now, right?
Oh, yeah, it's been in the city for twenty years.
That's why I was just making it clear. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. The final ordinance for this evening is Ordinance Number 2014-20. Mrs. Noel.
Ordinance Number 2014-20, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of 17795 Coshockton Road, parcel number 49-00050, from the present zoning of Monroe Township Agricultural to R1 Single Family District, GB General Business District, and PND Planned Neighborhood District.
Mrs. Vale.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll give this a second reading this evening.
Ordinance Number 2014-20 receives its second reading. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We'll move on to remarks and administration. Mayor Mavis.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I'd like to report that, thank you to the hard work of Mr. Scott, Mr. Glass, and our department heads, that we have concluded our budget meetings, and so we're now putting all that together, and hopefully sometime in January, and I think, Mike, you already have a meeting set for that, for that work session. I'd also like to share with you that the chief, police chief, myself and Mr. Keaton went out to the industrial park the other day at Gelled Wind. They had some difficulty with speeding in the parking lots, and also at the time that workers are released, at the end of the day, seemed to be difficult getting out on Newark Road. So I went out and talked to them. We also heard about the difficulty in getting employees out there. They have difficulty finding people that will pass, that can pass the drug test, and also people that want to come to work every day. So they're still looking for people that will do that. But Cameron Keaton was there, and I thought Cameron had some good ideas. He's, Cameron's going to get ODOT to come up and look at perhaps putting a center lane there for left-hand turns and in between the Blackjack Road light, then perhaps up to about Lanning, so we can begin to look at that. He had a couple of recommendations there for them that may help out a little bit. But I thought it was a good meeting, a chance for us to get to talk to folks who are running some plants in the industrial park. Also, I wanted to just thank Margaret Ann Rule. She was responsible for the nice commendation from the Ohio House of Representatives commending the City of Mount Vernon for their Gold Healthy Ohio Healthy Community Award. And then, finally, this week is Thanksgiving. Time for families to get together. We're getting together with our family and having Thanksgiving dinner, and I'm sure many others are also, and I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Glass.
I think so.
Mr. Scott.
I'll see you further.
Mr. Broeran.
On Sunday morning at 1:00 a.m., there was a fire at 200 East Gambier Street, and one of the residents there lost their lives. I want to begin by expressing my condolences to her family. I also want to note the bravery of a number of our first responders. The members of the Mount Vernon Police Department of the midnight shift were the first four people there. Patrolman Matthew Jones, auxiliary patrolman Nick Holdren, Chief Monroe, who was actually working that shift, and one of our newest patrolmen, Benjamin Lechowski. Patrolman Jones attempted to make entrance to rescue the woman on the second floor from both the front door as well as the rear door. Chief Monroe had to drag him out because it was, the smoke was too thick and the flames were too great. But they put themselves in harm's way to attempt to rescue her. While we don't know what caused the fire yet, we do know one thing. There were no smoke alarms in the house at all. I've talked with Chief, the Mount Vernon Fire Department Chief Chad Christopher, and the fire department does have some smoke alarms to give out if you don't have any smoke alarms in your house. I also want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that even if you have smoke alarms, you need to test them. They recommend twice a year at the time change. That's just passed. If you didn't go and check your smoke alarm, you need to do it now and make sure that it's working and to change the batteries. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Rob, for that. That's very nice, and then the reminder to all of us, because we are a small community. Again, Mayor, you caught all of us first, but just wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving and be safe out there. Everybody else is going to be on the road trying to get to Grandma's house or Mama's house to have turkey. And then Christmas parade is this Sunday, and it starts at 2:00?
2:30.
2:30? 2:30. So just a reminder that we do have the Christmas parade coming up and if anything, you'll see some of us in there. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mrs. Vale.
Well, in addition to what, thank you, Mr. President, in addition to what John said about the parade, there's a big party downtown, too. You can visit all the merchants who will be open to welcome you. They'll be having some cookies and punch and hot chocolate depending upon where you visit. So make sure you plan to go to church on Sunday morning, have lunch. There are going to be several places that will provide lunches. And then go downtown and enjoy the afternoon and the lighting of the tree at, I think, 5:00.
She is 5:00 or 5:30. Be there at 5:00. You won't be late.
I want to say that I did talk today with Chief Christopher, and thank you, Rob. I appreciate your addressing that issue because everyone in this community is concerned about what happened. I did ask, and Chad was certainly compliant, he is intending to come up with some issues that people often don't think about that might contribute to having a fire in your house as well as those things like the fire, smoke alarms. So you can be watchful for our chief having some kind of a document that maybe you can cut out of the paper and post somewhere in your home so that maybe we can avoid having these kinds of disasters. I would like to say, as others have, I'm looking forward to Thanksgiving and hope you are, too. I hope you have a joyous and thankful Thanksgiving, all of you on council and everyone out there visiting us by camera. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fair.
Just a couple of things. I don't really want to beat this to death, but I would like for everybody to understand what the sacrifices of Ben Lehman did as a combat soldier. I talked with a gentleman today that does black operations in Montana and he knew of Ben. There's quite an age difference there. But I talked to General Lee, who is the Assistant Quartermaster. He's kind of second in command down in, I call it downtown, in, at Beattler Armory. And he, I told him about Benjamin and being here in town. Now, while he didn't know him or know of him, my point was I was trying to get him aware of this gentleman who has come from, came from Mount Vernon. And, you know, he, like I said, he was quite a, he was quite a soldier. And that 10th Cav Regiment is a long, steeped-in-history cavalry regiment, which at one time was an all-black unit, the 10th Cav. And being a combat, member of a combat brigade team is, he was out there in front. And so, you know, those people and forward observers don't have a real longevity because they're right out there in the front. So, and he was also part of the 4th ID, which is at Fort Hood, Texas. So my condolences to Benjamin's family and to make everyone aware that this gentleman, at the age of 22, gave his life doing something he, he was sincere about and for our freedom, basically. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Mrs. Seville?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join everybody else in saying happy Thanksgiving. And also, I'm going to share with you some of the things I'm thankful for. I'm thankful for living in this community and in Mount Vernon and the people that are in it. And I want to thank the voters for letting me be their servant and for letting me to serve with all of these people. I really appreciate it. It has enriched my life greatly. And I want to thank all the people that are out there, the service people and the families that are missing theirs, and hope that they all get to come back home and not end up like the one we just talked about. It just breaks your heart. But I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and hope to see you on Sunday at the Christmas parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville. Mrs. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend the staff of the Hiawatha Water Park for their hard work and dedication to the city and providing a safe and high-quality recreational venue. And thanks especially to Jerry and Joy Klinger and to Julie Zimmerman and Marsha Orsborn that were here this evening representing the water park and answering our questions and our concerns. And I think we look forward to this open community meeting that we're talking about, maybe in February, where we can all work together to find ways to even make that water park even better. But, you know, great job, water park staff. You really, I can tell, you know, you really, really care about, you know, what your job in this community. And also, I want to thank Joel Daniels. He's not here this evening, but, boy, he's done a great job as our code enforcement officer in the last few months in making this city a better place to live for all of us. And happy Thanksgiving and I hope to see a lot of people downtown this weekend for the Christmas parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carl. Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Three items, real quick. Counsel, I spoke to Mr. Scott. Budget appropriation meeting Saturday, January 17th, 9:00 AM. Mark your calendar.
I have.
I'm sure you'll take care of that, Mrs. Noel. Mr. Scott, I'm sure as soon as you have numbers together, you'll get them to us so we can, it always helps counsel if you ask the questions prior to that Saturday, so you can get home by mid-afternoon. So January 17th, 9:00 AM downstairs. Mr. Fair, I made a note on the parking lot passage. There'll have to be a lease drawn up on that and probably approved by council.
Rob, there does definitely have to be a lease drawn up on it.
Well, we already have a lease for the other ones. I think that we could possibly just amend what we already have. I'll take a look at it.
The provision entered in that a lease was included in the resolution you passed tonight, so you won't need another piece of legislation.
Will we need a lease to find out, though, of exact, just like the other lots?
We'll probably just amend the current lease rather than drafting a new lease.
If I could see that, you know...
And you want a copy of it, right, Mike, for the...
I will need a copy. What I'll do is forward that by email to the board and so they can look at, have any questions. But, so you're saying it doesn't have to be approved by council, then?
No, it's that we include it in the legislation, the entering into the lease. So we'll just amend the current lease to do that.
So we can do that. We'll get that done because that'll be a quick switch over in how we handle, not physically, but on paper. And then the other item is, along with the Christmas parade walk this Sunday, I've been notified Santa Claus is scheduled to be on the square from 11:00 to 2:00 on the Saturdays after the Christmas parade, prior to Christmas, and also Christmas Eve. And I understood there'll be pictures taken as well. So that's 11:00 to 2:00 on the square, Santa Claus, before Christmas and Christmas Eve. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. On December 6th at 8:30, as some council people will be at SIPs in case people want to come down and discuss city issues informally with city council. Encourage people do come to parade this Sunday and also to the parade end, to the walk downtown. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there. I'd like to thank the media, WMVO, Mount Vernon News, Knox Pages, and Time Water for broadcasting this. That being said, I'll call for adjournment.
Sue move.
Second.
I move in second. We adjourn this session of council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.